For the, you could stay for the correspondence.
I guess we'll have to see what time we finish with the reorganization.
Okay, so I'll see then what to do. Let's wait, let me call, oh, he's there. Hi Bruce.
Hey buddy.
How are you?
Rahashem, thank God.
We are live everyone, just so you know, okay?
Thank God.
Hi Lady. Lady.
How are you, Mr. Chairman?
Rahashem, how are you? Okay. I, I think we have everybody on board, right?
Yes.
Okay, so Ally. You, you start.
Oh, I got it.
You're the chair lady.
Good evening, it's Tuesday, January 5th, 2021. This is the reorganization meeting for the Lakewood Planning Board. Uh, the time, date and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the Township of Lakewood at least 48 hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act. And please rise to salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America.
United States.
For which stands, one nation, indivisible. Um, Mr. Jackson, we have four reappointments. I don't believe everyone is here, though we do have four. Class one was Mayor Ray Coles. Class two, we have Mr. Flansbrough reappointed. Do we want to take them one at a time with the oath, or should we do everything?
No, we, we could do it uh, in, as a group. So what members are online have to take the oath of office? And I'll, Ms. DeCicco reads to them.
Mr. Flansbrough for class two and Mr. Garfield as the alternate.
All right, uh, Ms. DeCicco, you want to read the oath?
Uh, sure, Mr. Jackson. Um, so, um, I, I guess, uh, whatever those members that Mr. Jackson just mentioned can repeat after me. I, uh, blank.
I, Justin Flansbrough.
I, Dave Garfield.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Repeat after them guys.
Uh, so, so just repeat after me. Uh, do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
That I would uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will fulfill my duty to the Lakewood Township Planning Board.
And that I will fulfill my duty to the Lakewood Township.
Excuse me, Lakewood Township Planning Board.
Faithfully, impartially and justly perform all of the duties.
Faithfully and partially, justly perform all of the duties.
Of a member of the Lakewood Township Planning Board.
Of a member of the Lakewood Township Planning Board.
Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you. All right, so we will in due course, uh, forward the form and, and they'll have to be signed and, and, uh, put on file with the board secretary. So, uh, we, we'll, we'll do that, uh, through Ally.
And I'm going to assign Jillian, um, the ability to mute people. I think it's the, um, we're getting echoing and that's what's making some people, um, cut out while we're talking. So Jillian, you should be able to mute as needed while I continue there.
Will do, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Um, next is our election of officers for the calendar year 2021. Um, I will take nominations for chairman.
Ally, I'd like to nominate Yekiel Herzl as chairman for 2021.
And I'd like to second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Flansbrough and a second by Mr. Stern for Yekiel Herzl as the chairman. I will take a roll call. Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Absolutely.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Uh, yes.
You could say no.
Mr. Meyer.
Then we're going to nominate you. Lady, if you say no, we'll nominate you.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Yekiel, would you like to take over on the motion for a vice chairman?
Yeah, okay, thank you, everybody. Looking forward to having another great year together. Uh, now I would ask for somebody to make a motion for a vice chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to nominate Ellie Renner as vice chair.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Is he muted?
Um, I'm not sure.
Jillian, are you there?
Yes, I am, let me, I just sent a request to unmute to Mr. Garfield.
Okay. I think Ally, before a roll call, I should wait a minute and, and Jillian could unmute everybody.
That would work too, yeah. Um, Mr. Garfield on Mr. Renner as vice chair, thank you. Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Sable.
Yeah.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes, hear me, I said yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
And now I would ask for a motion for a secretary.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to nominate, uh, Ally Morris as secretary slash planning board administrator.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay, it was a good choice.
Who?
It was either Ally or you Terry, so I, you know, Ally.
If I had a vote, I'd vote for Ally.
Okay. I, 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 I think it's going to be unanimous, roll call please. Ally, could you take your own roll call?
I don't see why not. Are you going to take one if I don't? Mr. Garfield.
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations Ally. Looking forward to a great year. Okay, now we're going into, uh, we have to nominate an attorney and then, and the planning and engineer.
Yes, I do have the ability to pull, um, just certain members into a breakout room. So I'm going to, not sharing my screen. And, um, attempt to do that now, give me just a moment.
Hold on, hold on a minute. I'll, to, to go into a breakout room, there has to be a motion to go into, uh, and there has to be a basis for it, the, uh, reason has to be announced.
Okay, one, one second, Ally.
So I spoke to this rehearsal, I don't know if we have to go, you don't have to go into closed session if you don't want to. It's a little cumbersome in this environment that we're in.
Okay, Ally, uh, how many bids do we have? Let's start with an attorney.
We received one for the attorney from Mr. Jackson's office.
Okay, so I, I think if we don't have, I don't think we have to go into closed session on that. I would ask for a motion to nominate Mr. Jackson as the board attorney.
I'll move, Lady Isaacson.
Lady Isaacson moved. Who was that, Ellie seconds, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Is he muted? I'm sorry, I didn't wait.
Yep.
Um, I just sent a request to unmute Mr. Garfield.
Okay. Jillian, okay, he's there, okay?
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable. Mr. Sable.
He's not muted.
No, he's not, can I, is, can I move past him or we all can do it?
I'm, I'm here, I'm here.
Thank you. Uh, affirmative or negative, thank you.
Affirmative for Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
And Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations, Mrs. Jackson.
Thank you very much for your continued confidence and, uh, Jillian and I will continue to do a good job as best we can, thank you.
Thank you, looking, looking forward.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sable.
Mr. Mr. Raisik just walked into my office and he would like to get sworn in, please.
Okay. Uh, I'm, I think Jillian, I, he's amazed, doesn't mean, I think you have to administer the oath of office again. Okay, one sec.
Mr. Raisik, do you have the form with you?
Yes, I have the paper here, that, on my phone.
Okay, so, um, if you could just read the language in the form and I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. Um, and, and, uh, Ally, can you put the, uh, the language up on the, up on our screen?
Sure.
Great, thank you, I don't, I don't have any, okay, Mr. Raisik, you have that screen in front of you, so I'm going to ask you, uh, to, to raise your right hand. And, um, and that's, I state your name and then we'll read along, so just repeat after me and of course with the form. I state your name.
I, Mr. Raisik.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will faith, that I will fulfill my duty to the Lakewood Township Planning Board faithfully and partially.
And that I will fulfill my duty to the Lakewood Township Planning Board faithfully and partially.
And I will justly perform all the duties of a member of the Lakewood Township Planning Board.
And justly perform all the duties of a member of the Lakewood Township Planning Board.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
So help me God. Okay, that's it, congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. Okay, you staying on, Mr. Raisik?
Um, not for long, I can be here till about 6:30, I have another appointment, but I did want to get sworn in. I don't know if it'll help if I'm here till 6:30 or not.
Okay, no, whatever. Do it, okay, Ally, um, back to the planner and engineer. Do we have any bids besides? How many bids do we?
We received, we received only Remington Vernix for planner as well as for engineer.
Okay, so I would ask for a motion.
I'm sorry, I should note for the board that nothing changed in any of the bids for any of the professionals from what they were last year, so.
Okay, thank you, Ally.
Yep.
I would ask for a motion to accept Mr.
I will make a motion to accept Remington Vernix as, as the.
Okay, that was Jacob Meyer makes the motion and who, we have a second.
I'll second it, this is Justin for planner and engineer.
Justin, second, roll call please, Ally.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yeah.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mr. Raisik.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, Terry.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, um, A- Ally, first of all, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do have one application that requested a carry by the township's neighbors. Um, that is application SD 2457 made by Benjamin Barr. They requested to carry to the February 2nd public hearing. I recommend we make that announcement for no further notice.
Okay. Mr. Jackson, are you there? Or Jillian?
Yes, Mr. Herzl.
We're both here.
Okay. So who's making the announcement?
All right, Jillian, one.
Uh, sure, um, so, uh, we're hereby announcing that SD 2457 Benjamin Barr is going to be carried to the February 2nd, 2021 public hearing and there will be no further, uh, notice required.
Okay, thank you. Ally, just one second, Mr. Sable, uh, how long can you stay?
Yeah, so, so start in regular, uh, regular schedule, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I apologize, Chairman, but since we talked about taking correspondence first, I already reached out to the township engineer who's sitting in on one of the correspondence items.
Okay, so, so let's do it, no problem. Okay, thank you, Ally, thank you, no, no, thank you.
Okay, so we, we have two correspondence items up for discussion. The first is from Joseph Lipchitz on approval SD 2010. Sorry, let me make sure the, yes, the professionals are here on that one. Um, this was a subdivision approval that has a small portion of the property along Route 9. They've had some difficulties getting sidewalk in a place where the state is happy and the township is happy and drainage issues are resolved. Um, I would let Mr. Flannery present first and then Bill Schwartz is here from the township engineering office who is familiar with the problems at that site and can weigh in on, on what he thinks is best to do in this situation.
Ally, I'm on this one as well.
I'm just going to recuse myself on this, Ally, okay? On both of these, both cars.
Mr. Renner is recusing himself and, um, and Mr. Pfeffer is also here representing the applicant.
Okay, is, Terry, do you have anything or you're leaving it to those roles?
Uh, I don't, Chairman, uh, I, I will note, uh, that Brian, uh, Jeff and Bill and I had a, a video conference this afternoon, uh, to go over the projects. Uh, I'm, I'm going to preface com, uh, Brian's comments by indicating, um, the primary issue here is, uh, the request of the board for the waiver of sidewalk and subsequently curbing. Um, that's something that the board is going to have to act upon standing alone. What is done with that, whether or not there is curbing a sidewalk or not, uh, is going to affect the final drainage solution, which is a secondary item. Uh, and speaking with Mr. Flannery today on behalf of his client, um, we can deal with the drainage outside of this meeting. Uh, depending on what the, the board decides on the sidewalk and curbing request.
Okay, so Terry, correctly, thi- this application was before us and we requested sidewalks.
Uh, I believe that is the case, I know that was part of the, the previously approved plans. Uh, there are issues with that, which Brian will go into.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay, Brian.
Mr. Chairman, hi, uh, good evening, I'm Pfeffer. Uh, we'll jump right into Brian's testimony, if we can just swear him in, I know normally on correspondence, uh, usually look for something straightforward, but there's some technical items here, we can just throw Brian in, uh, so we could address those.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I did notice for this, uh, uh, for this meeting, so anybody who's interested in parties have to notify, sort of, our awareness.
Jillian, you want to do that?
Sure. Uh, if the applicants can please raise their right hand. Uh, um, excuse me, the professionals, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, this is an application that was, uh, before the board and got approval a while ago. It's for duplexes on Hilton Drive, which comes off Oak Street. Uh, New Lines did submit a, uh, a sidewalk, uh, plan, uh, with the correspondence request. And the, uh, issue arises with the two duplex structures.
Right, right, I'm sorry, can we just give a date of that and we can mark that as an exhibit as well?
It's a, uh, sidewalk plan, Oak Street 1, SD 2010 is the title. It was pre, the, uh, the date on the drawing is 6/14/19 with a revision date, the most current revision date of 9/30/20. Um, which is the plan that was submitted, so that, that would be A1.
Thank you, Brian.
Uh, so, that shows the, uh, two duplex units which have reverse frontage onto Route 9. At the top of this plant is Route 9. Uh, these units front on Hilton Drive, they have full sidewalk out to Oak Street. Uh, when we came in for the approval, we indicated that getting curbing on Route 9 would be problematic because of getting a permit. Uh, and the board waived the curbing and indicated do sidewalk with a berm to provide some, uh, type of pedestrian safety. Uh, there've been some, uh, changes since then and some stuff constructed and, and, uh, issues that were created uh, that make this a very unique situation. There, there was a sidewalk that was put in the right of way with a berm that blocked off some drainage, it was done without a permit. And the DOT came back and said, that's got to be removed, you got to remove the berm. And the applicant intends to do that. Our plan, if the, if the board acts favorably on, uh, the request to, to waive the sidewalk, uh, in Route 9 w- would be to restore the Route 9 right of way to its prior condition. And its prior condition included a walking trail. Uh, because if the board is familiar, and I have a second exhibit that kind of shows where the sidewalk is, but I, I think we all drive down Route 9 and nobody drives down very quickly because, uh, with traffic conditions, you get a lot of time to see. And, and, and you go a couple hundred feet with sidewalk and then you go a couple hundred feet on a, on an earth path and then you, then you get some more sidewalk. Uh, and this particular property is between Oak Street and High Street. Uh, and, and it, it, it's just as I explained and I, I think as the board members would, uh, would recall that right at the corner of Oak Street, there's maybe a hundred feet of sidewalk. And then it's dirt, uh, all the way, uh, up until the gas station. And the gas station, there's a little bit of sidewalk in between the, the two driveways. And then it goes back to dirt again, the opposite side of the street, it's the same kind of a situation. Uh, the, uh, DOT has plans to do, um, improvements to Route 9. They've been talking about it for a while. Uh, I, I, I firmly believe that it wasn't for COVID, they would probably, uh, be doing that this year, but in all likelihood, it'll be next year and, and I think, uh, Bill Schwartz would certainly have a better handle on that. But, uh, the applicant is in a position because he sold the lots, uh, that these units are built on. Uh, and I had a meeting with the applicant and the owners of those units a couple weeks ago. And, and in order to do, uh, sidewalks in this area and drainage in this area that the DOT would require, have to take down all the trees, the very few trees that they have in their backyard. Uh, additionally, because they now own it, the property's been conveyed to them. And there's a drainage easement in the back where they have, uh, a recharge system for the dry wells that, that's in an easement. But there's no easement from the right of way line to that easement. So if, if the, the board says y- you need to put in the sidewalk, the applicant goes to the DOT, which he's already done. The DOT wants a drainage system that's in excess of $200,000 to construct in the rear yard of these duplex units. Uh, this applicant can't do that, so if the board says to this applicant, do it, he doesn't have the right to do it. The only way we could do that is if either the state or the town condemn the property in the backyard so that the applicant would have access to do that.
Brian, why can't he do it, Brian?
Why can't he do it?
Yeah.
Because he doesn't own the property.
Well, what do the, what do the homeowners think?
The homeowners, uh, think that there's trees along their back line, which is along Route 9. And they want to preserve those trees. And they also don't want, i- if, if I could put the next exhibit up.
Please.
Next exhibit show. What's the question?
No, market A2. But Br- Brian, I'm putting, uh, just an asphalt path instead of the dirt?
We can't, we can't put an asphalt path in the township right of way. We can put a, uh, a crushed, compacted crushed R blend or, uh, compacted crushed, uh, dense aggregate, whichever the township engineer would, would feel would be best. Which is certainly going to provide, uh, a, an enhanced, uh, walk area over the dirt path that's on both sides of us. Uh, we can do that because the DOT is going to allow us to restore it. But since there was no asphalt path there before, we cannot put an asphalt path there. And the, and the DOT is very adamant that if we do anything in that right of way, they want curbing and, and they want a drainage system. And the reason they want the drainage system is because there's a low point in the road. And this is a, a, a regional problem that the DOT needs to deal with. And they actually hired a consultant to do that before this applicant put the sidewalk in. When this applicant put the sidewalk in, the applicant, the, the engineer that was hired to do it said, well, I don't have to do anything, let's get this guy to do it. Uh, unfortunately, a- at this point, as a practical matter, the applicant cannot do it. If the board says put the sidewalk in, what's going to happen is there's going to be a lawsuit. Uh, and, and the bond is going to get called in and it, and it's going to create, uh, uh, problems. But no sidewalk is getting put in because the applicant does not have the, uh, authority to go on those people's property. Additionally, the homeowners who are proudly online and they'll give you their proposition, they don't want a regional drainage system in their backyard. It doesn't belong there, it needs maintenance. When we go to the DOT or the DEP to design a, a regional drainage system for something like this, the new thinking is you do it in pieces all along. There's, uh, a, a, as I show on the map, it goes past, uh, Oak Street and it goes almost to High Street. And all along that, the, the drainage should be picked up and it should be dealt with as it goes on. And this is an off-site, uh, improvement that's definitely needed. Uh, and the Lakewood UDO allows the planning board to charge an applicant his fair share of, of an off-site improvement and the applicant, uh, is agreeable to paying his fair of an off-site improvement. That's something that he can do, that's writing a check. Putting a regional drainage system in the rear yard of four homeowners is something that A, he can't do and B, he doesn't want to do. And C, those homeowners don't want it done either, so.
Through the chair?
Bruce, yeah, Bruce, go ahead.
So Brian, let me ask a crass question, your client has sold all these, these lots, correct?
Correct.
How much is the bond that he has outstanding still for this project?
That, that would be something Bill would know better.
Okay, but I mean, the crass question is, why is this his problem? Why is he hiring you to come here tonight? He sold the properties, I'm not sure how this happened, what, this, uh, I'll be a damn.
I, I imagine he sold it based on the, they can't get COs, I think, on the property.
Mr. Chairman, if I can.
What's the, why are we here?
One at a time, one at a time. Bruce, you finished your question?
Yeah, like, why are we here? What's the, what's the pressing issue?
Okay, M- Mr. Pfeffer, Mr. Pfeffer, yes.
Is that during, once you get your approvals, part of the resolution compliance is that you need to have a performance bond. The, the plan was approved a certain way. The sidewalks were installed, that, if you go there right now, there are sidewalks in this place. They were inadvertently, they were put in the wrong spot. The DOT has come and said, rip those out. That, that, that's going to have to happen no matter what because the DOT is control, we put it into the right of way, they have to be removed. So as we stand today, there is a performance bond, for example, if it's a dollar or $10 million. The performance bond is in place. Um, at a certain point, at this point, the township's engineers, from my understanding, are looking at this application, are saying, you can't go any further because you have this issue and you have to resolve it. You have to resolve it either A, come back before the planning board who did the approval, who made this condition of these sidewalks, which again, we had agreed to, a- and resolve it at the planning board level, or. Or the township is going to seek to call in, uh, this performance bond. That, that's gonna, that's gonna spiral into several other items, um, and township could discuss those. But when they call in the performance bond, it's as Brian said, it, it'll be, end up it being a lawsuit. The issue is, again, innocently, nothing, we had, we didn't have a grand scheme here. These individual lots that have this issue have already been sold. They didn't, if they, honestly, if this was an issue, if this issue had arose before those, uh, those units had sold, it'd be a different story. You would go in and would be able to do some kind of a fix. But because these individual homeowners, as Brian indicated, and I'm not sure how you could tell us if anybody's on, online, they've all been noticed, Brian did and the applicant had, uh, to meet with, with some of the, or all the homeowners. And they've indicated, don't rip out our trees and you're not digging up anything on our property. Um, you don't have any right to do it and we're not, we want these easements on our property. So, so here are things that.
Okay.
M- Mr. Chair, can I ask?
Uh, yeah, I, I think we should hear, uh, Bruce, what Bill Schwartz has said, the township.
I, I, I agree, but my gut is, this is, this is an item of correspondence.
One, 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 one at a time.
This is gonna be at least forty-five minutes to an hour, which I don't mind doing, but.
But everybody, hold on one minute. Uh, this is difficult, we have people speaking. We have to respect when the chair recognizes someone. Right now, the chair has recognized Mr. Stern. So, one at a time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I'm not commenting on the merits, Mr. Chair, but my, my gut tells me, this is an item of correspondence. This is a thicket of issues that is gonna take us at least forty-five minutes to an hour to tease out. So my thought would be, if this is not a time-sensitive matter, we put this on, I don't know what it is. It's a resolution compli- I don't know what we put it on the agenda as, but correspondence is usually a five-minute matter. This is at least forty-five minutes to an hour. That's my humble opinion.
Okay, so, um, Mr. Fefe.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, my, my.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
If I understood Mr. Flannery correctly, one of the issues is an economic issue. I think he said it would cost $200,000. That's going to be something the applicant can, can, you know, cannot or will not do. The bond's going to have to get called, it's going to be a lawsuit, economic repercussions, et cetera. Ordinarily, those kind of concerns are not a planning board's concerns. However, in fairness, if, uh, nobody foresaw that sidewalks in this location would trigger, uh, D E P issues or D O T issues, which would require a sidewalk that was going to the drainage system that substantially more, uh, extensive, expensive and cumbersome than was originally contemplated. Is that a fair characterization, Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Okay, so, it, you know, I, I, I think it is fair, as Mr. Stern has indicated, to look at what the numbers are. And, you know, the, the fact that there's going to be a lawsuit over a bond, I mean, I, I, ordinarily, I would say for the, the planning board not to worry about that. But if, if, if they said, well, we're going to put sidewalks here and it seemed like a relatively simple matter and nobody thought in advance that the sidewalk was going to have to go where there are existing homeowners and it was going to be, um, you know, create, uh, an engineering mess. I think it is fair to ask the board for reconsideration of that. But I, I think you need to get all the information, like, uh, what is the, and then what happens to this property if, if, if the builder decides to walk away with it? Does that mean these lots are never developed? And does that concern the planning board less than the planning board would be concerned with having those sidewalks? So.
Mr. Jackson, I think it's all developed and sold already.
Oh, it's all developed and sold, okay.
Okay, yeah, Mr. Fefe, you're breaking up. Uh, I think that, uh, we should give the courtesy to Mr. Schwartz to say the township's, uh, point of view. And then we'll see if we're gonna continue this tonight.
Thank you, Chairman, um, that's correct.
Uh, Mr. Jackson, do you have to be sworn in?
I was just about to say, I, I think we have to swear Mr. Schwartz in. Uh, Mr. Schwartz, can you please raise your right hand? Or a friend that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Schwartz, good to see you again.
Good, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I haven't seen you in a long time.
Been a while.
Okay.
First question that came up was the output right now. The amount on that bond is $197,000 and change. Uh, there was a bond reduction that was done, so the current bond is at 197 thou- 197,000. And, um, in terms of the status, right now, correct, those homeowners are under T C O's and the temporary certificate of occupancies, um, that's what they're trying to close out. We have not issued permanent, it was there. And, um, but in, in essence, yeah, the way, Brian, you know, it's explain how the curbing essentially is creating a, a drainage issue. And it has been an outstanding drainage issue there. There's a low point in Route nine, as Brian indicated. That low point has panted in the past and because of that, D O T's looked for, you know, this extensive drainage system. In terms of sidewalk, there may be another option where you could shift the sidewalk into the site and not apply for a D O T permit. I don't know if that's something that's, Brian, you've considered.
Well, it, we did consider that and that's why I met with the applicant and three of the affected homeowners. Uh, and, and they indicated to me very vehemently that they do not want a sidewalk on their property. They will not grant an easement for a sidewalk on the property. And they will fight any condemnation effort to knock down the few trees that they have separating their backyard from Route nine, uh, for either sidewalk or drainage system, uh, both of which they feel are inappropriate on their property.
If the township or the, or the D O T wanna go ahead with eminent domain and put the sidewalks or drainage on their property, what, what happens then?
It, in order to eminent domain it, they have to show that there's no other thing. This is in the public good and there's no other way of doing it. And, and there is other way of doing it in an appropriate way. So I'm sure they would hire an expert who would say the appropriate way is you deal with this runoff all along this, uh, the side of the road all along the way. You don't, you don't burden one, uh, property at the low point in the road to accommodate the runoff. So there is other ways, they, they have a good fight on the eminent domain. And it, and it's not just a matter of the dollars, it's a matter of the practical situation that the homeowners that are in there and own the property don't want it.
Okay.
Well, if I could just add one, one other item?
Excuse me, really quick, I, I, excuse me, I think Mr. Jackson is trying to speak, but I just requested he be unmuted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you. We know who the boss is, who has the mute button. Um, the, I, I, I've, I've learned long ago not to argue with, uh, Mr. Flannery's legal positions. Um, but I, I respectfully disagree with his claim that the government has to show that there's, uh, you know, this is like basically the only way to do something with condemnation. My understanding is if the government wants something, they take it, as long as it has some public purpose. It doesn't have to be the best way or the only way, th- they can just flex their muscle and, and take it. Um, so, that, I, I.
But, but, but take it one step further. This applicant can't file a condemnation action.
No. Mr. Fefe, we don't hear you clearly.
Saying you can't, the applicant can't file a condemnation act. So let's follow.
Okay.
What we're trying to talk about is what we can do. What, what we can do, we can do some kind of, Brian indicated, some kind of a R blend, compacted gravel. We can pay into a fund to pay for a future sidewalk. These are all things we can do that we're working with everybody to try and resolve it to the best that we can.
Well, well, Adam, through the chair?
Yes, Bruce.
With respect, why is this our problem? Our being the township of Lakewood. When you do a condemnation or anything of the sort, the township, you're correct, is the only one who has standing to, to initiate that action. But the corollary of that is we also have to pay for any successful condemnation. Why is this the township's problem?
It's not that, well, I'm not coming to you as the township, we're coming to you as the planning board who requested this, uh, this sidewalk to be in. You're the only body, um, who has the right to remove that condition. Normally, we would not be sitting here asking you for any waivers from sidewalk. This is a very specific, uh, instance where we have the existing issue. Um, we're here before the board because we cannot complete our resolution compliance and get C O's for the people who have already closed and complete the, the, the items. If this, and, and, and maybe Bill could, could confirm what I'm saying to you here from the township, should this, should the board agree to remove as a condition the sidewalks and agree that we pay into a fund, this, the, the performance bond will be, will be reduced because there's no sidewalks that are gonna be put in. It'll be amended to the R blend and, and whatnot. Um, that's why we're before this board to deal with this issue. Right now, it's kind of like in a holding place that we have to address one way or the other. And the other is, again, it's not a threat, a, 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 and then at that point, um, probably we can't even do what the bond is asking us to do.
And, and the board is the only one that can waive the sidewalks. If the board waives the sidewalks, uh, engineering will work with the applicant's engineer to come up with a solution that's safe and works and, and it solves both the drainage and the, and the pedestrian, uh, access problem. So you're the only board that can waive it. If you don't waive it, then, then the applicant.
Brian, when is the D O T taking care of the drainage issue over there?
Well, they're gonna do that when they do the improvements on Route nine. Uh, and, and Bill would probably have a better handle on that. Last year, they said it was gonna be this year. I think because of COVID, they're probably saying next year at this point.
Okay, and, and your, your applicant, your applicant is willing to bond for the sidewalks when the D O T will fix the drainage?
Applicant is willing to make a cash contribution, so that's better than a bond. He gives, he gives money to the township. So now there's no, in the future, if something doesn't happen, where the township has to go to a bonding company. The township has money. He, he's in a situation that.
Who's responsible for the, for the sidewalks? The township or the D O T on that, over there?
Well, he, it, hopefully the D O T would do it. I- if not, the township will have the, of money and, and the board engineer will come up with an, an amount of money that would be needed to do it. And the applicant would give the township that money that would be held in an account for that purpose until such time as the township said, the, the D O T is never doing sidewalk, we, we're gonna do them ourselves.
Okay.
I should point out, I should point out that this hundred and sixty.
One at a time. Hey, Brian.
I should point out that this hundred and sixty-seven feet of sidewalk, if that got put in and there's no sidewalk on either side of it, we, we really haven't created a, a situation that's safe. Uh, so i- if this was the missing piece, I, I wouldn't be arguing so vehemently for this solution. What we're talking about is this hundred and sixty-seven feet, we're gonna make better than the, the walking path on either side of it. The, 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 the way we do it, uh, should last until the D O T does the sidewalk much better than what's on each side of us. And the township will have the money so that when they decide to pull the trigger, they have the money to pull the trigger and they don't have to pull bonds or, or call anybody up or do anything.
Well, the township is not doing it, the D O T has to do it.
The D O T has to do the drainage, the drainage.
Right.
Okay. Okay, a- any board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, Levy.
Yeah, Levy.
Uh, Brian, uh, if, I'm, I'm just a little confused. I- is there currently curb and sidewalk at the project?
There's curb and sidewalk on the internal roads that were built. There's no curb or sidewalk along Route nine.
Okay, and is, and, and any one of your plans, is there going to be curb and sidewalk along Route nine?
Well, I, 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 I should clarify myself. The applicant did build sidewalk, uh, along his re- reverse frontage on Route nine, which the D O T has told us we have to pull out.
Okay, so there is currently curb and sidewalk?
Not curb, sidewalk.
There is currently, there is along the entire 167 feet, there is sidewalk.
There is sidewalk.
I don't think so. Brian, I don't think so. I'm gonna drive down right now, I'll take a leave in five minutes. I'll take a drive down there, but I don't think so, I didn't see it this morning, unless I'm blind.
Yeah, D O T told, take it out. They listened to the D O T for a change.
When, when did they take it out?
I, I was, I drove past there last week and it was still there, uh, so if, if somebody. Concrete sidewalk. Hundred and sixty-seven feet of concrete sidewalk.
And it's stable. I think the, the sidewalk is not on the, it's, it's in the property, it's not on the curb.
It's set back from the road, there's a, there's a berm, it's probably nine feet from the edge of pavement with a berm in between.
Assuming, Brian, assuming that, assuming that the sidewalk is there currently, what happens if you do nothing?
Um.
They can't get the C O's, they said.
Well, we won't get permanent C O's because the D O T will, uh, but the, the D O T is gonna make trouble with Lakewood Township. Uh, and, and both Lakewood Township and the D O T are going.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that provoke action by the D O T to get, to take care, to take care of the drainage problem?
No, no.
Why not?
We, we met with, I've met with the D O T on a number of occasions, uh, and specifically on this one. And the D O T has like ten different guys that are all in charge of, of different things. There's a guy that's in charge of the paint stripings on a road. And all he cares about is the paint stripings on a road. There's another guy that's in charge of signs, all he cares about signs. So there's a guy that, that cares about what's in the right of way and he wants that out. The other guy that cares about the drainage, he doesn't care if it's in or out. So now the D O, the D O T is a black hole.
Is the D O T going to rip out the sidewalk?
But the applicant is hoping to rip out the sidewalk if, if the board, uh, agrees to waive a requirement.
Maybe, I don't think they could get the C O's.
I, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand that. What I don't understand is, is there an eventuality that there is sidewalk in this, in, in, in a concrete sidewalk along this Route nine?
The Route nine improvement plans that they're about, which is limited improvements, but it's intersections and stuff, that includes sidewalk along here between High Street and Oak Street.
Great, so my, my, my opinion is they should leave the sidewalk in the way it is right now. I don't think the D O T is gonna come and rip it out. They'll complain that it's in the right of way, which they can. And once the improvements along Route nine begin next year, like they're going to begin, then we can address it then. Brian, we approve this plan, there's gotta be sidewalks on Route nine. There can't be a dirt path, there can't be a furrow, there, there's gotta be a concrete sidewalk. Uh, in my opinion, there's gotta be curb also. The fact that it's nine feet and it's a berm, okay, I think that's a little bit better. But I don't think there's any situation where me, as a planning board member, approving something on Route nine can say, yeah, we'll waive the sidewalk for now. No, there shouldn't be one minute without sidewalk in, in, in an improved area. I, I, that's my personal opinion. And I, again, I, I think it, I think you should call the D O T's bluff. I don't think they're gonna rip out the sidewalk, I think they'll figure it out. That's what I think will happen, that's, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Levy.
To the chair, um, to the, I don't, just to, just to follow up on what Levy said, I, I don't think it's a matter of calling the D O T's bluff. I think that, um, before, before these homeowners who, who actually live in these houses, right? Is that correct? They live in these houses on T C O's before they are issued certificates of occupancy. The developer aside for a moment, um, the developer's gonna have to rip out the sidewalk, not the D O T. It's because the township.
That would be a question for Bill. I don't think, I don't think Bill is gonna recommend a, a permanent C O if the sidewalk is in there with a violation from the D O T.
That's, that's correct, because the town has this letter from the D O T indicating this guy's gotta rip out the sidewalks and the town's not gonna issue a C O, um, until the sidewalks are ripped out. So you're gonna have homeowners on T C O's for, I don't know how lo- I don't know how that affects the homeowners, it can't.
Yeah, how long can we keep them on a T C O if the state, if the D O T is gonna redo the Route nine anyway?
It's, it's not good for the homeowners, you can only be on a T C O for so long according to town ordinance and they're gonna have to keep extending that. And I don't know, it, it can't, it, it can only be detrimental for the homeowners. I, I, I'm trying to look at it from the perspective of the homeowners for a second. Forget about why this happened and who did it and how they did it. I don't know, but from the perspective of the homeowner, they're on T C O's and is there anything that the planning board could do to help these homeowners? They don't want, I understand, I just looked at the Google Maps and they don't want the trees taken down. They don't want sidewalks there where the trees are because then that destroys their whole.
Their privacy to Route nine.
Any privacy they have, that just destroys what, what they just bought. So why would we wanna do that to homeowners? That we don't wanna do, they're residents. Um, I don't know what the other, what other negative implications of leaving the sidewalk in has. I don't know what benefit really, it, it's gonna come out. So let me ask a question. What, how much money are we talking about the, the applicant contributing towards a sidewalk fund or something?
Uh, that, that he would contribute his fair share and, and your engineer would determine that number.
Brian, how much? You have $200,000 at stake, how much are you willing to put up?
Well, no, no, that, Bruce, it's not a matter of how. Well, no, no, Bruce, it's not a matter of how much they're willing to put up.
Bruce, it's what costs the three sidewalks.
We can't go down that road.
Okay.
According to whatever the.
Okay, one at a time.
If I can, yeah, this is not, it's not a negotiation. It's our engineer would come up with a bonding estimate, and that's what they would have to contribute. So I don't know, and not to put our engineer on the spot, is you have an idea of what this would mean in terms of a contribution?
I can't speak to that right now. I could, if you give me a few minutes, I could probably work a quick number. I will say though, is it just the sidewalk cost, or is it also drainage?
I think it would be appropriate to also put in his fair share of the drainage.
That makes sense.
Right, and I don't, I don't think, I don't think that's something you can calculate in five minutes.
Exactly.
I know you're younger than I am and you do this more often, but I know for me, it wouldn't be a five-minute thing.
I mean, maybe, maybe we're going to get some figures and some, some more numbers.
I'm asking the applicant, maybe we do it next time, we'll continue next time, and we have some numbers and, and, you know, try to satisfy the board that we know that eventually something good is going to be over there. We'll work with you.
Chairman, I do have two emails from members of the public, and there are two people on this call who I'm not sure if they're here on this application, but I don't recognize those names, so I don't know if you want to open to the public.
I, yeah, I, if we could do it fast, I don't want to waste too much more time. No, Bruce is right, it's a correspondence, it's taking too long. The only thing is, let's see what, are they for it or pro or con?
The two emails that I have are both against, I'm going to share my screen, both against putting it on their property with an easement. This one, Mr. Lemmer had a question about how they, I guess this was when they were considering putting an easement on the private properties. Mr. Lemmer says he doesn't own this property, he can't put an easement on my property. And then I also had from Mr. and Mrs. Brim, they do not agree to the request for a waiver from installing the sidewalk along the Route 9 right-of-way because they don't agree to have the sidewalks placed in an easement in rear of their property. I do not, I don't believe that the two people on this call are here on this application.
Okay.
We can unmute them if you'd like. I'm going to unmute.
Ally, I see, I see there are people, who did you just unmute?
I muted Vada and phone number ending in 1482. If either of you were here on this Route 9 sidewalk issue, can you please introduce yourself?
Hi, my name is Alter David Lemmer.
Mr. Lemmer, I just read your email.
Yeah, okay, your email was read already.
Mr. Lemmer, oh, okay, excuse me.
His email was read already.
Right.
No record. Okay, who's Vada?
Yeah, hi, that's me. I live on the same side, next to Lemmer and Brim.
Okay.
Sir, we're just going to ask to swear you in before you make any comments or.
Affirm.
Or affirm, thank you. Raise your hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And can you please state your name and address for the record?
Gabriel Vajda, 11 Hilton Drive.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Vada, are you there?
Yes, yes.
Okay. What, what would you like to say?
Oh, Mr. Lemmer started talking. Let him speak first.
His, his testimony was put on the record already because he sent in an email.
I also don't want the trees removed.
And you live, you live over there?
On the same side as Lemmer and Brim.
Okay, it's, it's your backyard.
Yes, it's my backyard. I want the trees, and I think sidewalk will be good too.
You do want sidewalks?
Um, the trees are the most important right now.
Through the chair, Mr. Vajda, is there, is there currently sidewalk on Route 9?
No, dirt road, no sidewalk.
There is no sidewalk currently on Route 9.
No sidewalk, no sidewalk.
We have, we have a disturbance here. Yeah, hi, Mr. Sable, you went out there?
We're looking at Google Maps, it's showing some sidewalk, very small, I don't remember, I don't think it's three feet even, but it looks daunting.
It's, I think Brian testified, it's a path that goes nine feet away from the curb, from the road.
But sidewalk was constructed out there with the berm. The berm has kind of eroded on top of it, it's tough to pick out the sidewalk, and, and if you're not looking for it, it's only 167 feet long, so there's dirt, there's dirt, then there's this sidewalk that is less than ideal, and then there's dirt again.
But as of last. I'm asking, I'm asking a resident who lives right there if he sees any sidewalk along Route 9, he's telling me no.
Ask him if there was ever any sidewalk out there.
Mr. Vajda, was there ever any sidewalk out there? I believe we may have lost it.
Okay, I, I think we should wait on this, or we talk a little later tonight, if Bill could come up with some.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
May I speak, Mr. Lemmer here?
Okay, fast, you have to be, you have to be affirmed.
Is there sidewalk? There's a lot of.
No, no, you have to be affirmed before you say anything. You cannot, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lemmer, can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I stick your name for the record and your address.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Alter Lemmer, 17 Hilton Drive.
Okay, please proceed. What would you like to say? What would you like to say different than what it doesn't say in your email?
Our properties, much of it is now covered by earth from the berm, which is not retaining its soil.
Okay.
Is there, is there a concrete sidewalk along Route 9?
Yes.
Okay.
There is, okay.
Mr. Lemmer, Mr. Lemmer, do you want this to be as is? Are you okay with a TCO? You think you can get a CO if we leave it as is, the developer does not touch it?
No, I want my CO. The township is not allowing a CO, and I can't sell my property or do other things with the property without a proper CO.
So as a, as a resident of Lakewood Township, what is the best we can do for you?
It's kind of between a rock and a hard place here. I agree the sidewalk to be temporarily removed, that further improvements are made.
Excuse me, what, I think that's in your background, Mr. Lemmer, I don't see anybody.
I think somebody's demolishing the sidewalk right now, as I speak.
I'm muted as a person.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, Mr. Lemmer.
Okay, I, I think we spent way too much time on this.
Through the chair, Mr. Justin. I, I would recommend that, that they come back in, you know, the week after next, get some real figures. This is, if, if we're going to leave this as is, these, these homeowners will never get a CO. They, we're going to put them in a really bad spot, like, just like, just like what I was saying before, because if you leave it as is, like Mr. Lemmer said, they're caught between a rock and a hard place, they'll never get a CO, it's not good. They want to go refi their property, they're not going to be able to do it, they're not going to be able to sell their property, it's going to be a big problem for them. And I'm not, again, I don't know what happened, but at this point, we have to do what's best for the homeowner. I think, I think the applicant should come back in two weeks.
Justin, let me ask you a question. If the applicant agrees, one second, if the applicant agrees to make the asphalt, not the asphalt, the rock, what's it called again, and put money, if, does the applicant agree to work it out with Bill Schwartz, whatever number he says, if it's agreeable to him, I can ask the board if they want to make a motion right now.
I think we need to hear more Yehiel.
Okay, so forget it. Okay.
Ultimately, Yehiel, if we had a solution that the developer was happy with, and the homeowners were happy with, and the DOT is happy with.
There's no such, Bruce, there's no such solution. There's no such solution.
That's why we need more.
There's no, there's no such solution, and I don't understand the reason to delay a motion on this, on this correspondence, which in my opinion, as Bruce said at the beginning, this should never have come on as correspondence. There's quite a bit of testimony that was required. Correspondence is a five, 10-minute item, not a, not a one-hour item. But again, I understand that the homeowner is caught between a rock and a hard place, we're also caught between a rock and a hard place because we feel bad for the homeowner, but we have thousands and thousands of people who travel along Route 9, many of them by foot, and they need a sidewalk over there, and they need a safe sidewalk over there, and to remove the current sidewalk is not in any way a solution. If they would like to come back with something else, that's fine, but currently as it is, I am ready to put forward a motion right now that we, that we will not waive the requirement for a sidewalk.
Let's make the motion.
Chairman, can you make a motion, please?
You can make a motion.
I'd like to make motion to have the sidewalk put in as it was planned.
Was that Mr. Raizik?
Yes.
Okay, but Mr. Raizik, we have, we have an issue because the DOT would not allow that.
The sidewalk is in.
The sidewalk is in.
Leave it as is, then, let's put it in, leave it as is.
How are they going to deal with the DOT?
Add it on, add it on, if not, please leave it as is.
How are they going to deal with the DOT who wants it out?
And the homeowner. That's their issue. The DOT, the point is let's get them to speak.
I know, I know it's their issue, that's why they're coming back here. The town will not give them a CO because if it was condemned by the DOT, the town will not issue a CO.
Chairman, I understand.
Yes, one at a time. Who's speaking? Ally, you're speaking? Mr. Jackson?
John's muted.
My motion stands as it is, and we can go back to the township separately from the homeowners to try to work that out.
Ally, you wanted to say something?
I think John was trying to say something, but he's muted.
Yes.
Ally tried first.
Ultimately, the request, the request from the applicant is for a waiver of a previous condition. The board can just deny the waiver and say they don't like any of the options presented by the applicant. It's not the board's job to find a solution to this problem, unfortunately.
That is what I, that is what I was saying, and Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to deny the waiver.
One second, Mr. Jackson wants to say something.
Jackson wants to speak.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm hearing two different thoughts from the board members, and, and I think two of them are on, you know, what I'm hearing, two motions are that, to.
Mr. Jackson, you faded out, I don't hear you. Mr. Jackson, we don't hear you.
He doesn't hear you either, Yehiel.
Can you guys hear me now?
Now I hear you. Okay, start again. Any record?
I hear two schools, you know, two.
Thoughts.
Two thoughts. One thought is to not deny their application, and there's another thought that says, and that would mean the sidewalk, say the board's not amending its application, and it's basically the developer's problem. I hear another school of thought from board members stating, well, let them come back with more information and will consider this because this has consequences, and, you know, I want to hear more about this. So there is right now a motion, I essentially hear that motion to deny the waiver application. So recognize that motion, if there is a second to that motion, then you could have a vote. A vote to deny it would be to deny, and a vote in opposition to the motion might be to await a second motion to have them come back with more information.
Okay, so basically, Mr. Jackson, I just want to add, a vote, if we do go for a vote, and a vote is to deny the waiver, they always have their, they can always come back and advertise for a full meeting if they could fix something up and come back for a meeting. It doesn't mean everything is status quo if we deny right now.
Yes, because this is just on correspondence, it's not a whole big thing.
We're not denying them.
And here in this motion is the idea, well, you know, it's not a formal application, they haven't brought all the proofs, we're not going to do this now in this context.
Right, and then if they have any proof to bring, they can come back. Okay, so we do have a motion on the table.
Come on, I can't have a minute, if that's what you follow me into my room.
Okay, I, okay, Gillian, if you want to unmute, Levy's talking.
Nope, I'm here. My, my motion was to deny the waiver.
Okay.
Second.
By Mr. Raizik?
Yes, second, yeah.
Okay. And, and we're leaving the applicant, if he has any proof to come back and prove his point.
Yes, if you want, Mr. Chairman, I can include that in my motion.
Okay, thank you, okay, roll call.
Mr. Garfield.
See me? Mr., he's muted.
I'm sorry, I just sent him a request.
Okay, we'll wait. I don't think it's fair. Okay, Mr. Garfield. Gillian, you're muted now.
Mr. Garfield is unmuted now.
Okay, thank you. Ally, want to make the roll call?
Mr. Garfield said yes, thank you, Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
He stepped out.
Okay, Mr. Flansbrough.
No, I, no, I'd like to see something better for the homeowner.
Mr. Hertel.
I, I would like the homeowners to come back and try to work something out with them.
Mr. Leonard stepped down on this one, correct? Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
I'd like to see a better plan for the homeowners.
And Mr. Raizik?
And Mr. Sable just came back, hello?
Okay, Mr. Raizik, what was yours?
I, I said yes.
Thank you.
I'm going along with the motion.
Okay, one, two, three, four, we have five affirmative, three negative, motion passes, so the request under correspondence.
Okay, so the consequence of that is, is the motion, the application to get a waiver to approval on correspondence is, that is without prejudice, the applicant can make an actual application to amend their, their plan.
Okay.
Chair.
Mr. Raizik has to go now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I would ask you not to listen, I would ask you not to listen to the next correspondence only until you have the three applications, please.
Thank you.
You're coming back? Ally?
Yes.
The attorney for the next one is on call, what did we say? I would like to go to the applications now, it's taking too long.
Well, we can move on to the applications.
Are you okay with that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so please announce the first application.
First application on tonight's agenda is SD 2443 by Simon Soloff, it's a major subdivision to create 10 lots from two on Ocean Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Ally. Terry, can you please go through the report?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm reading from our December 7, 2020 report, going on top of page three under submission waivers. You have block and lock conforming with the tax map, topo contours within 200 feet, man-made features, EIS and architectural drawings. We can support the submission waivers for hearing purposes as written.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations to?
This is just, I'll move the motion.
We'll move, do we have a second? Second on the favors, all in favor, I. Okay, Terry, please continue your report on the zoning.
All right, I'm going to continue one under zoning. Section Roman numeral true, comment two, no bulk variances have been formally identified, however, we caution the applicant that if there's any right-of-way dedications that are subsequently required by the state or township, that could trigger bulk variance conditions. I'm sure we'll get testimony on that shortly. And finally, continuing under the design waivers, on page four, design waivers required design waivers required from providing an eight-foot wide right-of-way dedication along Cherry Street. Um, this waiver was granted for an adjoining subdivision north of the property. Uh, comment two, design waivers are required from providing driveways within 30 feet of the intersection of two public streets. Um, we had a recommendation, um, that the unit be reconfigured, uh, and relocate one of the spaces. Uh, and then finally, a design waiver is required, uh, for sidelines which are not perpendicular to Route 88, which the board has granted in the best.
Okay, thank you. Ally, who's the attorney on this application?
I am. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Mary Moynstein, on behalf of the applicant, Simon Soloff.
Okay.
Um, maybe we'll try to make this one the five-minute application in place of the correspondence.
Okay.
For a change, we have a pretty simple one. This is an application for preliminary and final major subdivision approval, simply to subdivide the property into 10 lots, upon which five duplex structures will be built on zero lot line lots. This is a fully conforming as of right application, so honestly, I don't even have that much to say on it. Um, I'm going to turn over the floor to Brian Flannery and ask that he be sworn to describe the application for the board.
Okay, Brian? Brian, are you there?
I am here, my hand is up.
Okay.
Great, uh, Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, the application as indicated is for five duplex structures, uh, 10 zero lot line properties. Uh, it, it's conforming lots, as indicated in, uh, Terry's report on page three. Uh, the property is in ER 75, uh, and duplexes are permitted use on 10,000 square foot lots with 65-foot wide, uh, minimum, which, which we provide. Item two indicates no bulk variance have been requested, uh, and, and it's my testimony, we're, we're not asking for bulk variances. Uh, the, the lots are conforming, uh, and, and it's my professional opinion that, uh, uh, no, uh, dedication would be required from the DOT with respect to Route 88 that would create variances. Uh, with respect to the design waivers, we're asked for an eight-foot, uh, road widening easement, uh, along our property instead of a right-of-way dedication. And this is similar to the rest of Cherry Street. Uh, Cherry Street is a dead-end street. I have, uh, as A1, sheet 60 of the tax map, which shows its two lots on the corner of Cherry Street and Ocean Avenue.
Brian, what's the difference between an easement and dedication?
Uh...
I know, I know what the difference is, but is there any difference for the township?
From a practical standpoint, there's not an easement, there's not a difference. The right-of-way gives the township more ownership of it than the easement, but the easement gives them what, what they need, which is to have the sidewalk and, and the, uh, and, and the adjoining property to the right-of-way.
Can the builder rescind the easement or no?
No, absolutely not, and, and it's, it's the same easement that was given all the way up on, uh, on Cherry Street.
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm asking, I want to make sure that the township can have the sidewalks, the road could be widened, whatever we need can be done with an easement.
That, that is...
So in a practical matter, there's no difference for us?
That, that is correct.
Okay.
Uh, the, the second item that we're asking for a design waiver on is, uh, driveways within 20 feet from two public streets. Uh, and, um, this is the first time I've ever seen this in a report, so obviously it's somewhere in the UDO, uh, that I haven't seen, so that, that surprises me. But with respect to that, it's my testimony here that the driveway that we're talking about is on Cherry Street, uh, which is a dead-end, uh, residential street. Uh, and it's my professional opinion that having that driveway within 20 feet of the intersection, uh, is, is not a, uh, any kind of a safety problem. The people coming into this development and, and going out of this area are the few residents that are along Cherry Street. And, and it's my testimony that, that it's a waiver that makes sense and, uh, we're requesting the board grant that waiver. Uh, looking at, at the rest of the report, uh, on page five, number six, is indicating we should revise that corner unit. And, and if I go to A3, which is the one that shows the, the units, uh, the corner unit is setback and we're trying to provide a larger rear yard for them. Uh, rearranging that unit reduces the backyard, and it, it's a detriment to the future homeowners with no real benefit, uh, from a, uh, a, a, a safety standpoint or the public good. So my testimony is that we don't want to do that, obviously, if the board feels differently. Uh, we have the availability to do that, but it, it's my testimony that the, uh, application as submitted makes sense and, and we would request that design waiver from, from the 20 feet. Uh, additionally, and number nine, it says to provide clarifying testimony with regard to, uh, trash pickup, and, uh, uh, trash pickup would be by, uh, DPW. Uh, they're typical, uh, duplex units along Cherry Street, and, and they would expect their, uh, trash to be picked up the same way as all the other duplexes on Cherry Street. Item 10 indicates provide testimony regarding, uh, basements and attics. And, uh, again, it, we're proposing basements in the units, the basement's per ordinance are allowed to be rented. We provided four, a minimum of four parking spaces per unit in accordance with the ordinance and a time of plot plant. If more parking is needed per the ordinance, that would be provided. Um, the, uh, the, the other items in the report, we would satisfy the engineer as part of resolution compliance. Uh, normally, I, I go into the master plan on the background information and the vision statement and, and the municipal land use law. I, I think because we're only asking for design waivers, I, I will not use up the board's time on that.
Okay, you're putting sidewalks all over, Brian, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and all the, all the units front of Cherry Street?
No, two of the duplexes front on Ocean Avenue, and they have combined driveways so that people would have the availability to turn around and pull out straight onto, uh, Route 88.
So everybody has four parking spaces and it's a combined driveway?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions for any board members? Okay, we'll open it to the public. Ally, is anybody from the public? Ally, you're muted. I see you shaking your head.
Yes, I do have, um, no, I'm sorry, I do not have any from the public on this. If there's anyone in attendance who'd like to speak.
Okay, is there, is there anybody there? I don't see anybody. I don't see anybody.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so I'll close it to the public, and I would ask for a motion on this application. And I'll wait a minute, Jillian, if you can unmute everybody.
This is Justin, I'm, I'll move a motion to approve the application as presented.
Okay, thank you, Justin.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Meyer, second, roll call.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Hertel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, motion approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Moynstein, for making up the lost time.
Yes, I tried.
Okay, okay, uh, onto number two.
Our next application is SP 2396 made by 470 Oberlin LLC. It's a major site plan for, in addition to a warehouse at 470 Oberlin Avenue South.
Thank you, thank you, and Terry, can you please go through the report?
Thank you, Chairman, I'm reading from our December 14th, 2020 report. Uh, I'm going to start under submission waivers on page three. They include topo contours, man-made features within 200 feet, plans, profiles of utility layouts, uh, B-site features, uh, plans and profiles of utilities. Uh, and in the IS, uh, as indicated in our report, uh, we support the, the submission waivers for hearing purposes.
Okay, do we have a motion? Ally moved, do we have a second?
By Justin.
Justin, seconds, all in favor? Thank you, Terry, onto zoning.
All right, I'm going to continuing on the bottom of page three, on the page four. Zoning comment two talks about front yard setback. Um, it's pre-existing non-conforming with regard to existing conditions, and the regular setbacks, however, uh, being in the industrial zone, they have the option of getting relief from the industrial commission, uh, down to 15 feet, which they have obtained, therefore, um, this has been satisfied. We simply request, uh, that the zoning data on the final plans ever approved, uh, be corrected to show that. Uh, continuing on to page three, um, there is, um, a non-conformance with respect to minimum side yard setback, uh, as well as an existing sign, uh, per comment four. I believe that's the only variance relief, I'm sure we'll get testimony shortly. Uh, continuing on under design waivers on the section three, they include sidewalk along the Oberlin Avenue South and New Hampshire Avenue frontages, uh, curb along the New Hampshire Avenue frontage, uh, provision of perimeter buffer, um, as per, uh, section 18, 803E of the UDO, and street trees within, uh, the proposed shade tree and easement along Oberlin Avenue South. Um, however, there are existing trees in that area as well. Uh, those are the design waivers and those are our comments, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay, who's the attorney on this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, attorney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, as Terry indicated, this is an application for an addition, an addition to an existing building, uh, 25,000 square foot addition. Um, as Terry indicated, um, we are seeking a minimum side yard setback variance. Again, it's 29 and a half feet exists, uh, it's an existing, uh, condition, and 30 feet is required. Um, other than that, this is really a conforming application. I can't at this time swear in, Brian Flannery?
Yes. Jillian?
Uh, yes, I am. Mr. Flannery, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I, I think Mr. Lyons is here on this application.
I, I apologize. Glenn, are you on? I didn't see Glenn on, that's why, uh...
Uh, is Mr. Lyons here on the...
Yes, I saw him, yeah.
Call?
Yeah, he's muted.
Oh, okay.
He's waving, he's waving.
I apologize about that.
No problem.
We have a Glenn sighting.
There we go, uh, Mr. Lyons, if you could please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Professional planner, Lakewood, New Jersey.
Okay, please proceed.
Chairman, I assume you accept, uh, Mr. Lyons credentials?
Yes, yes.
And Glenn, if you're going to be referring to any exhibits, we can just mark them, uh, with the date. Thank you.
Um, I'm sorry to interrupt Mr. Lyons for just a minute. Um, we had an emailed comment on the last application that was not read into the record. That was just an oversight on mine and Mr. Jackson's part. The email came in during the public hearing, and we didn't read it. What should we do about that, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Jackson, are you there?
It was very quiet, it trailed off at the end, I didn't hear what the question was. You said there was... She found the letter.
She found the letter, yeah.
There was an email on the last application that's read into the record.
Ally, Ally, let me ask you a question. Is it trouble or...
Uh, it's asking for specific conditions, including retro reflective street name signs, crosswalks along Cherry Streets, stop bars, yellow paint on the curbs, and bright sticks on the stop sign.
Was that from Mr. Zines?
Yes, it appears that they are typical construction concerns and, aside from the crosswalks, they may or not, may or may not be under the planning board's jurisdiction.
That was, uh, Miriam's case, right? Is she still on? Miriam, are you on? Is that okay with you?
Uh, I, I think Miriam's gone, but I know the applicant would be okay with the answered response that to the extent it's, uh, the standard saying in the township laws that the applicant has no problem with that, so we would work it out during resolution complaints.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, with, with your permission, we can work that into the resolution to the extent practical, uh, on the applicant's request.
Is everybody on board, everyone okay with it? I'm okay with it.
It's Justin, yeah, I'm okay with it.
Okay. Mr. Stern, are you okay?
Yeah.
Okay, who else is out there? Levy?
I apologize to Mr. Zines for missing that.
Okay, basically...
And actually, I am still on, sorry, I just have to unmute myself, I'm fine with it too.
Okay, so basically, I asked, basically, the board members are okay with it, so we can add it to the resolution. Uh, thank you, Ally, and I apologize to Mr. Zines.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, so now back to Glenn. Glenn, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, so please proceed with your application.
Okay, uh, we are proposing a, uh, approximately 25,000 square foot addition to the existing building, uh, located on Oberlin Avenue South. Uh, the property is located, uh, between Oberlin Avenue and New Hampshire Avenue. And, uh, there is a 20-foot wide, uh, conservation, uh, easement along the rear of the property, uh, on the New Hampshire side, uh, for tree safe purposes and so on. Um, we are, the original building's been empty for quite a while. Uh, going through the variances, potentially we're down to, the two variances, uh, that we need are the front setback, which the industrial commission approved. Uh, so, and that's an existing condition. And then the other is a, uh, side yard setback variance, which is on the south side of the building where our exit driveway is. And that's also an existing condition, we're just adding to the building, so, uh, you know, instead of the variance being, you know, 75 feet long, it's now 175 feet long. I don't know the exact dimensions, but it's about that. So, we're not, we're not any closer to the property line with the building, it's just more up the building. I think both of these back, again, the, I don't believe the side yard setback variance is a detriment to the neighbor, um, they've been, they've had the building next door to them for, for all these years. Part of their parking lot is right on the other side of the property lot.
Glenn, are you planning on putting any sidewalks in?
Uh, we can put sidewalks in on, uh, Oberlin Avenue. We, we'd have to clear some trees because it is, it's, uh, you know, nicely, nobody ever cleared the front yard, but...
Okay, one second, so on, on New Hampshire, you said you can't because you have a conservation easement?
Well, there's a conservation easement, and the county has already reviewed it, and they specifically do not want us to clear any of the trees. And then there's, so, and so that doesn't leave us any room really between the property line and the road. There's really nowhere over there to put sidewalks. And there were no sidewalks on this side of New Hampshire Avenue from Cedar Bridge, uh, all the way down to the apartments that are close to Route 70.
Does Oberlin have sidewalks?
Uh, Oberlin does not have sidewalks. They're, they're intermittent, I, I don't want to say they're not there. As the board has had new applications along Oberlin, I, you know, uh, other applicants have, have added sidewalks.
Okay.
We have no objection to put the man on Oberlin.
On Oberlin, okay. Is there anything in the report that you don't agree to?
Uh, no, actually, it was a very, very short report. Um, we really didn't have any problem with any of the conditions, uh, in the report.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have any questions from Mr. Lyons? Okay, I'll just wait a second, if anybody has time to unmute themselves. Okay, seeing none, we'll open it to the public. Ally, can you please check if Mr. Zines sent something in?
No, Mr. Zines sent a comment on the following, on the next application, but on this one, I'm opening up my folder right now. I have no public, no public comments on this.
Okay, thank you. Uh, this time I would ask for a motion on this application.
Mr. Chairman, this is Justin. I, I move a, I move a, uh, motion to, uh, to approve the application as presented, but with sidewalks on, uh, Oberlin Avenue South.
Okay, thank you. And we have a second.
Mr. Isaacson, I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Flansbrough. Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sable, are you here? I know you can't, did you come back? Do you want to vote on this, Mr. Sable? No, okay, Mr. Hertel?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to number three.
Our next application is SP 2445 on Cross Street. This is a major subdivision to create 40 lots in three existing blocks. Um, the board will recall this, adjacent to the one recently that was a campus approval that switched to a residential development instead under that special ordinance provisions for existing campus approvals. I believe these blocks were part of the original campus approval, so this would be the completion of the campus approval being converted to residential.
Yeah. Uh, so they, they want to make, uh, like an R75, is that correct?
I couldn't, I didn't, I didn't say it out loud because I couldn't remember if it was R75 or R10.
I think it was R75. I think it was R75. Okay, Ally, you finished, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so Terry, would you like to please go through the report?
Yes, Chairman. I'm reading from our December 17 review, going on top of page three, submission waivers. We have a survey within a portion of the property, property owners within 200 feet, topo contours and manmade features within 200 feet, EIS and architectural drawings. We can support the waivers for hearing purposes for reasons stipulated in the letter.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations?
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Meyer.
Second by Justin.
Justin seconds. All in favor? Aye. Okay, please, Terry, please continue.
All right, continuing on page four, we're review under zoning. The project is permitted as stipulated in item one. No bulk variances have been requested. Easements are shown on several of the corners of parts of blocks 457, 458. Other projects have been approved with similar mechanisms for radial dedications and minimal lottery variances. It's up to the board whether they want to approve it as such or do what's indicated. And then finally, under design waivers, since more than 25 units are proposed, a design waiver is required from the UDO requirement for 5% of contiguous open space being allowed for recreation. And then comment two, unless the design waiver is granted, proposed driveways for all street parking shall not be located closer than 30 feet to the intersection of the two public streets. And that's our comments, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Terry, who's the attorney on this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Fetter, attorney on behalf of the applicant. Can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yes, please proceed.
As Terry indicated, the project is fairly straightforward. We're not seeking any bulk variances. I have Brian Flannery, have him sworn in. I'll just ask Brian after he's sworn, if he can mark any exhibits and indicate, just call out what the plan, the exhibits are, and if they're dated and date of last revisions. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Flannery, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. As Terry indicated in his report, and Ally when she read the application, this is the remainder of that campus where the option is for the R75 development.
Brian, is this the last piece of property that we have out there on, for the campus with the R75?
This is the second part of the application for the campus that was previously referred to as the Strickman campus. So, we have A1, as sheet 89 of the tax map, and as you can see on the map that Ally has up in block 450, 450, a lot has been added, which is the recreation area. When the last application was done and it did not provide active recreation, the applicant revised this to provide a recreation area with equipment. As indicated in Terry's report, we're supposed to provide 5% open space area, so the applicant could have provided 5% with no recreation. We're providing 4% with recreation, which in my opinion meets the intent of the ordinance. Going through Terry's report on page four under zoning, it indicates that the zero lot line developments are permitted use. Item two indicates that no bulk variances are required. Item three is the indication that the corner lots, we provided the sidewalk with an easement. We're happy with them with an easement. If the board would prefer to have a radial dedication and then have the lots slightly less than the minimum 10,000 square feet, we're okay with that. We'd prefer just leave it with the easement as done because it's virtually the same thing. Under design waivers, I indicated we're providing roughly 4% of 8,000 square foot lot with active recreation. If the board remembers the prior application, which was to the west of this, two blocks west of it, another recreation area was proposed. So, the location of this is ideal in that it spreads it out and has a couple recreation areas. Additionally, I'd like to point out that like in 450 and the blocks surrounding that, those are currently in our 20 zone. The master plan says they should be R12, so those would be, I would anticipate they'd be 12,000 square foot lots. They're small blocks, so they're not going to require recreation. By providing this additional recreation area in that location, it provides a benefit to the other properties that'll be developed in addition to this property. The second design waiver that we're asking for is the one that I never saw in the Lakewood ordinance, and I've got to think this is the first time there's been something in the Lakewood ordinance that I didn't see, and I got two applications on the same night with it in there, of the no driveways on two public streets within 30 feet of the intersection. My testimony, again, is that these are local streets. To the large extent, there'll be local drivers. I don't feel the driveway within the 20 feet of the intersection is a problem, and we would request that design waiver. Continuing in Terry's report on page five, it asks for testimony with regard to homeowners' association, and the applicant is proposing a limited homeowner association just to maintain that recreation area there. There's no reason for a homeowner association for anything else, but so that the township isn't burdened with the maintenance of that recreation area, there would be a limited homeowner association just for that recreation area. Item six asks for testimony regarding the number of bedrooms and parking, and we're going to provide a minimum of four parking spaces, and however many parking are required by the ordinance, we would provide the remainder of the items in the report. We would satisfy if the board acts favorably on the application. Again, with respect to, I normally go through the master plan and the municipal land use law. We're not asking for any variances. I'd be happy to tell you about all the growths and how great this is and all the other aspects of it, if the board wants to hear it.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Flannery?
Yes.
Okay, Dave? Yes.
Yes. Was there a traffic study done on this area? As you know, Cross Street is a problem. You have one, two, three, it looks like you're going to have six entrances in that whole area coming out. This will only be part of what's going to be developed. And it's a, let's call it a master street plan to try to work to alleviate maybe an area where a traffic light will go in so cars can even get out.
I think the traffic engineer is here, no? Can I see him?
I'm not sure if Scott's on the call. The traffic report was submitted. This also needs county approval, and as Mr. Garfield indicates, the problem with traffic is on Cross Street. The intent, and I think the intent of the town and the planning board, when they looked at that and made it R12, was that the paper streets would be developed. And the purpose of that is it provides a lot of transportation and access alternatives off of the main roads, so that neighbors in this area don't have to go on Cross Street or Massachusetts to get where they're going. But the conclusions in the report are that this will act, provide traffic in accordance with the accepted standards, the trip generations are all there, and it's being developed in accordance with the master plan.
Ally, can you go to the bottom? What level is it? Level C? C and D?
C and D.
Okay. Now, Brian, they could construct any houses here before Cross Street gets widened?
Conceivably, yes. I have spoken with the township, the county engineer, who anticipates the Cross Street widening to occur this year, and there are many other approvals that are required before this could be built. This is not going by the master plan recommended zone change based on improvements being made. This applicant will be required to provide a traffic and drainage impact fee to both the county, as well as a impact fee to the township relative to the development within the street core.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Through the chair?
Yeah, Mr. Stern?
So, Brian, you, first of all, I want to compliment...
I see, Mr. Stern, I just see Scott Cunnels here. So, when you finish, if he has anything to add.
Okay.
Unless you want to hear him first.
No, no, that's fine.
Okay, so Bruce, go ahead first.
So, Brian, first of all, I wanted to compliment, I guess, your team for the previous application. Ally was kind enough to send me the revised plan showing the playground in the first application, and it's very nice. He did a, wasn't like a half-baked job. It was a real job, and it was, here, Ally's pulling it up right now.
Ally's great. She knows where to find everything. So fast.
It's the right location, it's the right size, and so thank you for putting that in. And the new one you're proposing now, I think, is fine, even though it's a little bit undersized, given that you have a 10,000 square foot one right nearby, that's adequate. What you didn't do is answer the chairman's question. Are we done with these campus zones that somehow turn into, you know, townhouse developments by private individuals? I just, I'm not sure how this ever evolved, but it doesn't seem like good policy and good planning. It's not something we can control, but I'm curious, how many more of these are coming down the pipe? Are we done?
Well, first of all, you characterized it as campus approvals that turn into townhouse development, but it's not townhouse, it's R75, so it's singles or duplexes. Secondly, that was a recommendation in the master plan of 2017, implemented by the governing body in 2018, and it had a provision in the implementing of it that only applications that have been deemed complete, approved or deemed complete by the date of that application. So, that door has been closed. It's not like anybody else can come in after that was approved and prepare it. So, if your question is relating to campuses, the campus ordinance is still on the book. It was tightened up to require that it's a legitimate educational institution of higher education. It was tightened up to say all the, all the housing has to be associated with the campus, and it has to be an accredited college that also offers graduate degrees, so...
So, knowing that, thinking the former question, the ones that somehow a campus development was allowed to become a single-family 7.5 development, that door has been closed?
That door has been closed.
How many more got under the wire that we haven't heard yet?
Off the top of my head, I know there's one very close to this because I've worked with that applicant, Rabbi Przansky's campus, which is to the south of this. I know there was another one, the Bergman campus on, I think that was on Ridge Avenue, and...
All these people had universities with graduate programs?
The Bergman campus was submitted prior to that tightening of the ordinance.
Brian, is this the one that we went around and around on, and the applicant came into the board and their application was actually rejected and put in abeyance on the basis that they did not yet have a graduate program?
This property is not that...
Okay, you know what I'm talking about. So, this applicant did have an accredited graduate program?
This applicant was submitted prior to that tightening of the ordinance, and it was actually this project that the neighbors discussed and the planning board was thinking about when they made the recommendation to allow R75 development instead of a campus to reduce the density and provide needed housing that's market rate and taxable.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Okay. Brian, I see Scott Cunnell here. Let's see, want to put him in?
If the board wants to hear him, he's happy to talk. I'm sure if the board doesn't want to hear him, he gets paid the same thing whether he talks or not.
Okay. All right, let's see if any board members want... Any other board members have any other questions? Okay, let's open it up to the public. Does anybody from the public like to be heard on this application?
Chairman, I do have one email.
Okay.
Also, Mr. Zines.
Okay.
I will read it quickly, it's not long. He says, "I noticed the plans show a playground on less than 5% of the space. This is unacceptable. Playground matter. We need the full 5%, and I urge the board to require the full 5% and not grant any waiver. Additionally, I would like to recommend the board condition its approval on the applicant installing the following: one, retro reflective street name signs along all the corners. They should be installed on top of stop signs so they don't get blocked. Crosswalks along the corners, stop bars, as well as double yellow solid lines painted 50 feet from the stop bars. Yellow paint on the curbs 50 feet from the stop signs, 25 feet from the crosswalks, as well as no parking signs along these areas. Bright sticks on each stop sign."
Okay, thank you. Brian?
Normally, I would respond after the public is closed. Is that it for the public?
Okay, let me see, is there anybody else? Okay, and Ally, do you have anybody else from the public who would like to be heard?
No, that's the only thing I have, is Mr. Harrowitz here with the applicant. That's the only other...
Mr. Harrowitz is on the next application.
Oh, he's on the next one. Okay, I don't...
Well, he's on the correspondence? There's no more applications? Okay.
The next correspond, I'm sorry, the next correspondent.
Next correspondent.
That should be for the public, then.
Okay. Okay, so just open it up, no, let's not open it up to the public again. Okay, do any board members who would like to make a motion on this application?
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Okay, Mr. Meyer moves to approve. Do we have a second?
This is Justin, I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, is that including Mr. Zines's request?
My reply to Mr. Zines's request would be the same as usual, that to the extent that it's attached to standards, and during resolution compliance, we make sure public ordinance will agree with it. The only thing it is that requests that I want to point out is that the ordinance only requires 5% with no recreation equipment, providing 4% with recreation equipment, so my testimony is that that complies with the intent of the ordinance.
Okay, and Brian, you're having sidewalks all over on the whole property, right? And garbage is going to be DPW, right? Okay, okay, so we have a motion and a second on the table. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
No.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Frankbound.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
No.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
That's four affirmative. Thank you. Motion passed.
Okay, motion's approved. Thank you. Okay, that finishes for the public hearing. Now, we have one more correspondence.
Yes, pardon me just a moment while I...
Yeah, take your time.
Wait a...
Terry, while we're setting up, can I ask a question of our newly appointed counsel?
Okay.
So, John, what is the scope of correspondence and what's the scope of normal things or the agenda? I'm just looking at these two and the fact that Brian's putting up a presentation. What is allowed in correspondence? How can we act on some, what's the difference?
Over the years, we've had a lot of back... Over the years, we've had a lot of back and forth on this. Basically, the municipal end use law says that an applicant can modify an application as long as it's not material. It says it in the opposite. Any material change to an application must be with public notice. So sometimes if we think it's material and we want to do it on correspondence or the applicant seeks to do it on correspondence, we'll make them notice, and they'll have notice, as you may have picked up on, a lot of our correspondence matters are with notice. That's if I think the change is material. Whether it can be done on correspondence or whether it requires a full application is a matter of the board's discretion. Let's say you want a sentence changed in a resolution. Fence was going to be white, we want a gray fence. You know, that type of thing is relatively straightforward and easy. What doing it on correspondence does is it takes away a lot of the applicant requirements, which an applicant can always seek waivers for anyway. You know, with something that seems relatable, sometimes the staff, Ally will encourage it as a means of clarifying something, and sometimes an applicant just overreaches significantly and tries to put through something that's very complicated on correspondence, and usually when that happens, the board says no, you have to come back with an application. The pros on doing it on correspondence is it's a lot, you know, it's streamlined, it's simplified, it's cutting through the red tape for people when, you know, judgment calls for it to be done expeditiously. The downside is it doesn't have the significance, the scrutiny, and doesn't get the attention that it might otherwise get if it was on a formal application.
Your opinion, your experience, should Mr. Lipschitz's correspondence been in correspondence or an agenda item?
That was, well, they were just seeking to have the sidewalk removed, you know.
Mr. Jackson, you're breaking up.
That's a tricky one, and what my, I think-
Jackson, we don't hear you.
Mr. Jackson?
On either way, and the board was quieted on that. One half of the members thought that-
Mute, John. John, can you hear me? You're break-
I'm sorry. Is that better if I get close?
Can you just let me mute you for a second? I think in short-
You hear me?
Yeah, you're on a delay. But I think, I think, Mr. Stern, you have your answer to-
Thank you, Ed, I'm sorry for the digression.
Not at all, but I do think-
Now, is that better?
Yeah, it's been happening a lot, Mr. Jackson. People are trying to push through full applications through the correspondence.
I'm hitting on mute, and it keeps going back to me.
Okay, so I, saying that, Ally, do you feel construction is minor?
Well, a few years ago-
Mr. Chairman, can I speak?
Yeah, one second. Mr. Jackson, we don't hear you, so I'm letting Mr. Pfeffer speak. Okay. Mr. Pfeffer.
Good evening. Adam Pfeffer, ten to be half of the applicant. And yes, over the years, obviously, the correspondence has changed a little bit from where it was and in a different form. I will tell you that on the previous correspondence item, again, it was not something that was created, there was no real other way of going about it. This application, again, just to be clear, before an application is put on for correspondence, we vet out what the issues are with the board professionals to make sure it's something that the board can look at. And yes, I agree, obviously, the board has the discretion. I will tell you on this item, on the construction, the modifications that we're looking for are minor and some of them are unverbiated.
Okay.
Basically, there are four items-
One second, Mr. Pfeffer. I just want to know, Terry, do you have any comments to make on the correspondence?
No, I think the request, Chairman, is self-explanatory. They have to make their case. I believe one of them deals with the impervious coverage variance in lieu of what was proposed. I think some of the others, the applicant professionals are going to have to testify as to the changes requested to the board's satisfaction.
Okay, Terry, like the question that Mr. Stern asked, do you feel this could be heard on correspondence? Is there a lot, is there any material changes that should be heard by a full board meeting?
I think their requests, and this is my personal opinion, their requests themselves are not that complicated. There's a maximum building coverage variance that's now sought. I'm sure Adam has been confirmed as advertised for this hearing, I believe. Correct, Adam?
Correct.
All right, so that's no different than if it were a formal site plan or a formal subdivision application.
Terry, what are the plans made public for people to see it?
I believe these are always posted on the website, correct, Ally?
Okay. I just want to make sure every member of the public has a right to attend if he wants to and to see the plans if he has any objections.
Yeah, just one more point, Chairman, just kind of expanding on what John said. You know, as you're aware, we get these correspondence requests first, and we decide whether or not they can go forward as a correspondence or as amended approval. The board is not obligated to act upon this in the form of correspondence. If issues come up that board members are uncomfortable with and they want more, they certainly have the privilege to.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Okay, so I'm, Mr. Pfeffer, back to you. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I just want to give Terry to explain if there's any, okay, Mr. Pfeffer, continue.
The first item, and I do have also Brian here who will provide testimony, as it was indicated, this correspondence was noticed for. The first item I just wanted to mention is with regard to the maximum building coverage. Just for the board's benefit, this really was just a typographical error on the original application. Building that was shown on the plans is exactly the building that we're asking for. It was just a oversight that we did not call out, that that required a variance for a lot covered. So that building, it's staying. Nothing, we're not, it's not any larger, nothing else has changed on it. It's just that we didn't call out that variance for that building when we- That building requires a 25% to 28% lot covered, whereas 20% is the maximum allowed. So that's, as far as that item, that's the only variance that we were seeking in addition to what was already approved, but it's the same building that you saw. The other items have to do, and Brian gets to some of the technical items, has to do with some of the phasing and some questions regarding the resolution that needed some clarification. John, or I guess John, Brian at this time?
Yes, Mr. Flannery, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give before the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner.
Brian, what kind of computer do you have? You always come in loud and clear. Everybody else is breaking up. We got to get the better equipment over here for everybody else.
I have an HP, but I'm like far away in my house in a big room all by myself, so I think maybe that's the thing. My wife put me up here far from everybody, so.
Okay.
So, as indicated, we're asking for a maximum building coverage for the House of Worship. And as Adam indicated, it's the same building that was shown on the plans when we submitted them, but unfortunately, when the application was submitted, we didn't indicate that it required a maximum building coverage. The ordinance allows a maximum of 25%, and the building, if you go the outside and the most conservative way of measuring it, it's 29.6%. So certainly, it's my testimony that that's de minimis in nature. When you looked at the application, when everybody sees it built, it's not going to be, it's going to be exactly what everybody envisioned when it was done. But we're requesting that variance, and the second item that we're asking for is a submission waiver on the architectural plans. And architectural plans were submitted with it to show the type of houses we're going to do. RVE was very diligent in reviewing it and seeing that the plans that we submitted don't fit on the lot without variances. Obviously, we're not going to ask for variances, and obviously, we will come up with plans that fit, similar to the ones that are done. But we, at this point, rather than have an architect draw plans for custom lots and we don't know what they're going to be, we're requesting that relief. We've given plans showing about what it's going to be. We've shown the building envelopes, and the testimony is that we're not going to request any variances with respect to that. The third item that we're asking for is with respect to phasing. And submitted, Wadsworth Avenue was built with the Oak Street Core and its existing road that's there. What we're asking is that this first phase be just those five duplexes that front on Wadsworth. At the time, we called Phase 1 also the House of Worship, and that requires putting in Argyle Avenue in order to have the House of Worship. So the applicant is requesting that to amend the phasing so that we would do the units along Wadsworth first, and then as part of Phase 2, where we get into the bulk of the units, that shul would be developed. And the last thing we're asking for is some clarification. There were conditions saying that we needed sidewalks going to the house and to the apartment, basement apartments, and due to the configuration of lots, some of them don't work. If we stack the parking, it doesn't leave space for a sidewalk getting to the side of the units. So we would propose, and we would do as part of resolution compliance, we would do sidewalks from the sidewalk along the streets, Wadsworth or Regcom, to the sidewalk in front of the buildings. And that sidewalk would extend to the stacked parking, so the only place where somebody would have to walk on a driveway to get to those steps would just be the one stacked parking in the back where there is sufficient room to do it. Any of the corner lots, we would provide sidewalk. Any of the lots where the configuration allows the sidewalk heading to there, but we're requesting a waiver from that, which is not a condition. I think this was probably the first application that that condition was placed in, and what we're suggesting is that we can comply with the intent of it by providing a parking space along the side of the unstacked parking that takes you to the entrance that gets to the house, and this would get us to the front door, which is part of what we were requested to do. It just, in all cases, does not get us to the side door.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Flannery? So, everybody unmuted? Okay. We have to open this to the public? Okay. Okay, so I'm opening it up to the public right now.
Okay, from Mr. Zynas. He says, firstly, it appears in the original plan, Argyle would be paved completely from Wadsworth out to Halsey in Phase 1, and now the applicant wants to switch this to paving Argyle only in Phase 2. If this is the case, this is unacceptable. We need Argyle Avenue paved ASAP to provide an additional exit out to Oak Street. I urge the board to deny this change of plan. Additionally, the applicant seeks to remove the conditions which the board originally put in under Mr. Sable's recommendation, which is that there be a pathway separate but adjacent to the driveways from the road. This is a very important condition which the board rightfully set. I urge the board to deny the applicant's request now to remove this condition. Yes, congrats on all the new swear-ins. That's all I have for public comment.
Okay, I will close it to the public.
Over the years, we've had a lot of public mentors, regular ones. How come still compete as nicely as Mr. Zynas?
Brian, can I just ask you to address, again, we're not taking away the intent of the board's pathway to the side entrance. We are complying with the intent, it was just the way that it was stated. Again, I do, I think Brian is correct, this was the first time that it was ever suggested, and we have no objection with complying with the intent, just the way that it was stated we can too. But we are providing a alternative, is that correct, Brian?
Yes, that is correct. The other thing I wanted to mention that I didn't say is that one of the requests in the correspondence was the HVAC and trash enclosures were inadvertently shown in the wrong place, and we're going to work out the HVAC and the trash enclosure as part of resolution compliance, but we'd also like that to be part of it. But, right, with respect to Mr. Zynas's question, we're going a step further than other developments have gone in accordance with what the board requested. We're just indicating that in certain places, we don't have the room to put that separate sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. I would ask for a motion on this correspondence. Is anybody there?
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
Yes.
Okay, all the issues on the correspondence, the three issues. Okay, do we have a second on it? There's four. Ally says there's four. Justin seconds it. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Frankbound?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion approved. Approval of minutes?
Moved.
Moved. Second, all in favor? Aye. Approval of bills?
Moved.
Moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Our next, everyone, our next meeting is the 19th, which-
Weeks from now?
Say on the 19th.
All right, good night, everyone.